Y'all ready? We hereby call this meeting to order and would like to thank tonight's presenters and everyone joining us in person via the livestream, and thanks for being here. Kinsley Rasmussen will be leading the pledge of allegiance. Kinsley?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, all of our board members, well, all of our board members are present except Mr. Facer, who's excused, and Mrs. Armstrong.
Oliver.
Oliver, I'm sorry. There are few addendum items with supporting information for the following topics. Media and Community Relations Report, Revised Procedure 640-2, 64002P, Textbook Adoption, K-12 Enrollment Capacity Report. I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda with the following addenda. Is there a motion?
I move that we approve the agenda with the addendums.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. No opposed. Motion is passed. Now, next on the agenda is the approval of minutes, and I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the following minutes as presented. Special Meeting Student Representative Orientation, October 18th, 2022. Regular Board Meeting, October 18th, 2022. Executive Session Personnel, October 26th, 2022. Executive Session Student Discipline, October 26th, 2022. Is there a motion?
I move that we approve the board minutes as presented.
Any discussion? Is there a second?
I'm second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next on agenda is the approval of the Consent Agenda, which includes authorizing the payment of claims, approving the supplemental financial information, and approving the human resource activity as amended. I would entertain a motion to approve the Consent Agenda. Is there a motion?
I move that we approve the Consent Agenda.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, motion is passed. Next, we'll hold a public hearing on the purchase of 42 Hawthorne LLC. Mr. Jonathan Balls will review the purchase and sale, and the sale agreement. Mr. Ball?
Good evening, Board of Members. Thank you for your time this evening. Again, before you this evening is the purchase and sale agreement of the property located at 4200 Hawthorne, which previously was occupied by Allstate. Just as a quick reminder how we got to this point, we had identified, we were looking for a building that needed, that the school district needed to fill some of our needs, and then when this building came available, we brought it to the board, and on September 29th, the school board issued a letter of intent to start negotiations to issue a, to get an appraisal on the building. And so that was done on September 29th, and subsequently, the appraisal was conducted by Certified Idaho Appraisal, and you received that appraisal at our regular board meeting on October 18th. Again, that appraisal came back for that building is valued at $13,500,000. We continue to work to clear up any of the things that we need so that we could use this for our learners, use this building, and last Tuesday, the 8th, the City of Chubak issued us a conditional use permit so that we can have learners and educators in that building as well. So, before you now, Superintendent Howell and I have been negotiating and working with the owner, currently out of Boise, on this purchase and sale agreement that is before you. Again, just to kind of get the nuts and bolts there, again, the purchase price is $13,500,000, and that consists of cash of $12,600,000 with a $900,000 donation. And so, we felt fairly good that that was, you know, significantly below the appraisal price there. Again, just to, we, to come up with this money, we had to kind of use several different funds to be able to afford this. Just for your reference, $6 million is from our federal ESAR dollars, $4 million is from our hundred general fund, and 2.6 million is from our 420 plant facility fund. So, that equates to about 47% from federal dollars and 53% from our local state, state dollars as well. Again, just by way of information, again, this was when we approved the budgets in June, this is a prime example of, of course, we did not know anything about this building. And so now, we're making a significant change to the budget. And so, in February, we'll, as we normally come to you with budget adjustments, these figures will be included in our adjustments in February. I will also mention that we did review, we sent this purchase and sale agreement to our legal counsel, and they found nothing, nothing out of the ordinary or no concern to them legally.
Okay, thank you. Any questions? Next, we'll hold a public hearing on the purchase of 4200 Hawthorne LLC. I'm sorry, we're convening a public hearing, and the speakers will have five minutes. And I have one request from Mrs. Nash, Nass.
Well, thank you for your time. I appreciate your support and vision for career technical education in School District 25. We, School District 25, offer students a wide variety of career-driven courses, pathways, and bridges to the next step, whether that's going right to work, pursuing an associate's degree, or an advanced degree, or something else, possibly military. We have built industry-standard pathways that are supported by our local Technical Advisory Board Committee members, and a CTE campus will open doors of opportunity for future learners that they've never had before. And some of those things would be, a physical location has visibility, it's a place to belong and a place to be celebrated. The site would not be affiliated with any one high school, it would be CTE. And transportation would be provided from our local high schools to and from this campus, which gives equal access to all CTE programs for all students. Right now, students have to provide their own transportation. A building presents the opportunity for program expansion, meeting the labor market needs of this local area and the state. The opportunity to share lab equipment, which is now currently housed in all three high schools, is eliminated because it's all there. The common planning hours for instructors of different CTE pathways will allow them to not only build, collaborate and build instructional units, but produce physical products. And a great example of that would be our engineering program and our welding program. And they could then collaborate together and come up with something where they draft the project, and then they see the project actually in a physical form. We'd also have an intense focus on our student leadership opportunities, which are BPA, FCCLA, HOSA, and Skills USA. But equally important as our CTE learners is our CTS funding. Right now, you know that our CTS funding is reliant on 15% movement from the other high schools to where the high school that houses that program is. If we don't receive that 15% movement in the pathway, we don't receive CTS funding. But with a physical building, every single student who walks through the door is counted as a traveling student. So our CTS funding will increase dramatically, which helps support these programs. The benefits of a CTE program are not limited just to the CTE student body. Each high school will be able to reclaim those vacated classrooms, which allows for immediate social distancing and future growth. The dream, sorry. The dream of a CTE campus was started a long time ago, 22 years, and I was lucky enough to be one of those teachers who started a CTE pathway. And the hope and desire of a building that is dedicated to career exploration and success has never faded. I was so happy when the press release was made public that the board was going to pursue this facility. And I called the two people that were in my position before me, and I thanked them for giving me a great start as a teacher, and that is the foundation that I now stand on. And I would like to thank the former school board members who revived this goal of a CTE campus. And I am thanking you for your leadership and perseverance regarding career technical education. I value your support, and I look forward to the next chapter. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ron.
As I have no further requests for public comment, I'll adjourn the public hearing and reconvene the regular meeting, and will now consider taking action to approve the purchase and sale agreement for 42 Hawthorne LLC. Is there a motion?
I move that we approve the purchase, is that how I say it?
Mm-hmm.
Purchase agreement of 4200 Hawthorne.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. No opposition, so the motion is passed. And next on agenda is recognition, which will be presented by Mrs. Fisher.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Trustees, Dr. Helmis Johnson, and our student representatives. Welcome. Tonight, we will recognize several individuals who through their actions support and embody the district's mission to think more, learn more, and be more together. First up, we have our Cake Awards. Our district believes that a safe, supportive, and caring, and respectful environment is critical to student learning. The School District 25 Education Foundation, in partnership with McDonald's, supports the Learner of the Month Award to recognize one elementary learner and one secondary learner each month from October through May. The Cake Award celebrates positive character, attitude, kindness, and encouragement toward others. In addition to being recognized here, they receive a treat and also a recognition in front of their classmates. The nominees are, their behavior is observed by a teacher and approved by the school's principal. So for October Cake Award Elementary Learner, please help me welcome Ms. Jubilee Edwards and her teacher, Ms. Heather Judy, to the podium. So, hello, and thank you for joining us tonight. Jubilee is in the first grade at Idaho Elementary School, and she was nominated by her teacher, Mrs. Heather Judy. In her nomination letter, Mrs. Judy wrote, Jubilee Edwards shows a lot of outstanding character, attitude, kindness, and encouragement for a student her age. She is constantly looking out for others around her, noticing when others are feeling sad, and always trying to make them feel happy again. You can always find Jubilee trying to lend a helping hand or trying to make someone smile. She comes in with a positive attitude every day and gives that infectious positivity to those around her. When other students are having a hard day, she doesn't shy away from them. She approaches them, asks them what is wrong, and tries to make them happy again. Most first graders wouldn't take that role of caring for others as serious as she does. I think Jubilee is a great candidate for the Cake Award. And in the just minutes that I've known her, I can attest to that, she does have an infectious attitude about her. So thank you for being here with us tonight. I have a certificate for you, Jubilee. And then we also will have Mrs. Judy escort you outside. We have a cake, a cupcake kit, so your brother asked if there was cake included, and there is. There's a cupcake kit that you guys can make cupcakes together at home, okay? And then, we will give you a McDonald's gift certificate. Mrs. Judy will also receive that gift certificate. And then you, this is my favorite part, you get $50 donated in your name to your library, and you get to help your librarian pick out the books for your library, and you get to put your name in there, too. Isn't that cool? Okay, so, thank you so much for being such an outstanding representative in our school district and model for your peers, and if you would say hello to our board members so they can congratulate you. Congratulations. Yes, please say hello as well. So cute.
Hello. I love your name. Jubilee. Congratulations.
You're my neighbor.
How are you? Congratulations.
Awesome.
And Mrs. Judy is awesome, too.
I was gonna say, is there a connection?
We're, um...
And that's why that's my favorite part of this job. Now, onto our October Cake Award for our Secondary Learner of the Month. Will you please help me welcome Mr. Landon Rasmussen and his teacher, Ms. Jenny Peterson, to the podium? If you guys would kind of stand up like there, so our board members can see you. It's more interesting for them if they can see you. Landon is an eighth grade learner at Hawthorne Middle School, and he was nominated by his teacher, Ms. Jenny Peterson. So thank you for joining us here tonight. In her nomination letter, Ms. Peterson wrote, I believe Landon deserves the Cake Award. Academically, he is thriving. He has an 89% in both ELA and Math Honors courses. His work is always done with exactness and thoughtfulness. More importantly, Landon is kind, compassionate, and willing to help his peers. Landon is in leadership and offers peer tutoring to my intervention learners during flex. He is always willing to help others become better. One particular learning, learner has been struggling with math. Landon sat with him all week, helping him understand his math assignments. He explains the equation, and when the learner gets an answer correct, they do a handshake and celebrate the victory. This has been so special to watch as an educator. Landon has a gift of making those around him want to be better. With Landon, friend groups or social circles do not matter, he works with anyone and treats everyone like they are incredibly important. I love having him as a learner. He's creating a positive learning environment here at Hawthorne and should be recognized for all he does. Wow. That is a testament to great character. So in addition, you get the certificate as well, and in addition... And in addition to being recognized here tonight, we'll also send you home with a cupcake kit. So maybe you can have your sisters help you since Kinsley was so gracious in helping us with the pledge tonight. You will also receive a gift certificate to McDonald's, courtesy of our partnership with them as well as you, and then a $50 donation to your library in your name where you can help select those books and put your name in them. So congratulations. Thank you for being such a wonderful model of kindness and encouragement, and let our board congratulate you. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay, and now moving on to our November Employee of the Month Award, which is our Pies Award. The Employee of the Month Pies Award recognizes employees who positively influence educational success. The award is for employees who go above and beyond in that effort and Lookout Credit Union partners with us in providing this award. So tonight, we are recognizing Ms. Rachel Boland as the November Pies Award recipient. Ms. Boland teaches PE at Franklin Middle School, and she was nominated by Misty Foltz and Ms. Melanie Lamont. If you'll join me at the podium, please. Stand so they can see you. Thank you. I know it's awkward. Thank you so much for being her. So you were nominated by two people in your building, which is wonderful. In her nomination, Ms. Foltz wrote, "Rachel is a colleague that recognizes needs and independently initiates action. Rachel steps in and steps up on the daily without a second thought to help support colleagues and learners. She is our building superhero in action. On any given day, you will find Rachel engaging in acts of service to Franklin Middle School that go above and beyond one's typical daily responsibilities." So in your board packet, there is a laundry list from Ms. Foltz of all the things that she does. I'm gonna share just a couple of them with you. She can be found covering classes when we lack substitutes, coaching multiple sports, calling lines and subbing as our down referee for volleyball, running our start lines as head track official, covering as onsite administrator when Mr. Varican or Ms. Hale are both out of the building, keeping diligent track of our learners with diabetes and keeping them safe during exercise, using learners' names, even learners she does not have in class. I think that's my favorite. Knowing well the state of each colleague and checking in on staff that are going through tough times, and the list goes on and on. Misty also added, "Rachel positively influences educational success at Franklin. She is a valued member of our Franklin family. Her gift is a big heart, and each learner and staff member benefits from the mark she leaves daily on our school. We would love to show Rachel a small portion of love she shows us by nominating her for a district Pies Award." And then in her nomination letter, Ms. Lamont wrote, "Rachel does an outstanding job teaching her PE classes. Also, she contributes her talents to many other areas at Franklin. She is a get-it-done person. If there is something that needs doing, she does it. Rachel is always ready to step up and help. She contributes so much to Franklin, helping out subs, putting together furniture. She is a great example to me on how to contribute more to the success of our school here at Franklin." So Mrs. Boland received the certificate as well as a $50 gift card, courtesy of Lookout Credit Union. And then for nominating, maybe you and Ms. Lamont can take lunch or, I don't know, split it. And then just thank you so much for your contribution to our school district and to Franklin Middle School. And that concludes our recognitions. Thank you so much.
Okay, next on the agenda is public written comment on topics pertinent to the agenda action items. Written comments... Written comment was received and is included in the packet for the board's information. However, I have no requests for public comment, so we'll move on. And next on the agenda are the student representative reports, and we'll begin with Highland High School.
Hi. So Highland High School raised over $800 for UNICEF. We just finished with our Veterans Week, which we raised over $600 for a local veterans organization for veteran athletes. This Saturday, we have our drama competition. Our fall sports are done, and all the coaches, directors, and students did great. And we had over 21 students audition and make it to the Gem State Honor. And that's what's happening at Highland.
Thank you.
Awesome.
Okay, I'm Marsha Allen. I'm your ISB co-pres.
And I'm Samantha Morgan. I'm the other co-president.
So at Century, we've had a very successful trimester. Our girls volleyball placed third at state, and they won the Academic State Championship. And the girls basketball is underway, and then the boys start in like the next few weeks. And drama districts are this Saturday, and if they win, it'll be the third year in a row that they've brought home the first-place trophy. And Speech and Debate sent 10 students to their last competition, and eight out of the 10 brought home trophies.
Our annual roundup was a success.
You can't say that word.
No. It was a great time, and we raised a ton of money, which will go directly back to the kids at Century High School. Last Friday, we had an amazing Veterans Day assembly, and we were able to have our very own college career advisor, Dylan Young, be our guest speaker. Overall, it was a great try, and we're really looking forward to next try after the break.
Thank you. And we have no other... So next, we'll receive the Morton and Company Liability Coverage Update provided by Chad Randstrom.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Trustees. Appreciate you making a few minutes for me. I feel a lot of pressure if this doesn't end in a round of applause.
It will. We're more fun than we look like.
I know you've got a busy agenda, and I appreciate you spending just a few minutes with me to talk about the state of the ISB insurance plan and the insurance marketplace for public schools. First, I just want to say what a pleasure it is to work with Dr. Hal and your administrative staff, Mr. Balls, and Mrs. Bentley, who's retiring. It's been great to work with her as well. They're safety-minded. They're focused on safely educating kids and very cooperative as we work through any claims or challenges that we might face. So we just appreciate the team that you have here, as well as you supporting them in those endeavors. The public school sector insurance marketplace has its challenges in 2022, as you might imagine. The environment in which we operate is, I would say, a little more... Just contentious than maybe it has been in past decades. A lot of issues that are coming to light that have been challenging. We're trying to react to those from a coverage standpoint, as well as from a resource standpoint, to provide our members with help as they deal with them. There's a general state of rate increase, reductions of coverage, deductible increases, those types of things. Our goal as a program is to be stable. We're proud of the fact that our pricing has remained very stable, deductibles minimal, and that our coverage remains broad to allow the maximum amount of flexibility for our members as they manage risk, as they see best fit. When you have complex issues like Title IX, school security, employment matters, those types of things, we feel like you need that flexibility and also resources to help you manage that as best you can. From a loss standpoint, the district has performed incredibly well, and I'll knock on wood for you. Just over the last two or three years, really no major claims to talk about, a few minor auto liability incidents. But in terms of major claims, you've been able to avoid those, which certainly we appreciate. It helps us as we negotiate reinsurance placements on behalf of the program. Some things to think about as we look at loss prevention, just quickly. From a property standpoint, your facilities folks, and this is... A lot of this is in the memo that I sent to you, but just cages on those fire sprinkler heads in areas where they may be hit. We've had a rash of those. You'd be amazed at how much a wood floor costs in a gym these days, given the state of the construction marketplace, as well as just keeping that heat turned up during holiday break so that we don't get frozen pipes. It seems like every year we have some of that that happens, so we'd encourage you to continue to do that. Cyber liability is an area of large concern for the public space in general. I'm sure you've seen lots of headlines about school districts, municipalities that have been subject to cyber attack. It continues to be one of the major concerns that we worry about as we look at our district members. We have... We would suggest multi-factor authentication for all district devices and access to software platforms. What we see now is that firewalls and the things that your IT department do are sophisticated enough that cyber criminals are generally targeting employees because of that human error factor. So they're trying to send corrupted links or emails that they can get employees to open that will allow them to get through those securities. So training for employees becomes important, making sure that they understand proper email etiquette and that they're not clicking through on those types of things. And you've had good success in avoiding that as a district. So again, we appreciate that. Abuse continues to be a big concern, one that we would encourage you to continue to train your district on a regular basis. Avoid one-on-one activities between staff and students. The... That reporting piece and empowering students and staff to report things if they see them is a huge thing. And so we'd encourage you to continue to create that culture where everyone feels that they have a voice and they can report things if they see them. That is the number one concern from a reinsurance standpoint for public schools is that educator sexual misconduct, just because of the severity of those claims if they happen. The last one I would touch on is employment practices. That environment, again, increasingly complex. Recognizing that, we've made some changes to your policy that I'll mention quickly, and then I'll sit down so you can get to other things. I know you're busy. We have always had what we call the attorney consultation endorsement. So if you are considering terminating any employee, it would reimburse you up to $1,500 to consult with an attorney before you make that termination decision. We have enhanced that this year for key employees. Key employees, we would define as superintendent, assistant superintendent, principals, vice principals, or directors. So if any of those folks are... You're considering a termination, we'll now reimburse you up to $2,500 in those situations, recognizing those contracts are a little more complex and potentially more challenging. On the other side of that, if you, as a board, as a district, elect to terminate someone without consulting an attorney, one of those key employees, there'll be a $25,000 deductible if a lawsuit arises out of that employment action. But if you go through the correct process of consulting with an attorney before that termination, that deductible goes away. So it's just our recommendation that any time you're considering a termination, consult that attorney, use those dollars, and get the correct advice to do that properly to avoid expensive lawsuits. But again, the program is strong and stable. ICrimp is a great partner. They continue to perform extremely well on claims, get those taken care of quickly, and get things resolved. We appreciate the partnership, begin with you as a district, and I'll stand for any questions you might have this evening.
Any questions?
I don't think so, but thank you.
Thanks for giving me a few minutes.
Thank you.
Please hold your applause.
No, it was great.
Next, Courtney Fisher will provide the media report and community relations update.
Okay, in your board packet addendum, I've included the media report, which includes the links for articles of interest from October 18th through today. Headlines of interest include School District Twenty Five purchasing... Potentially purchasing the former Allstate Call Center. Pocatello Gets Creative to Attract Teachers and Paraprofessionals. Idaho's ISAT High Performers in the Top 10 List, of which Idaho was one of those. Idaho lawmakers weigh ideas for funding school construction. Idaho Falls District's 91 Bond and other regional levies. We've been watching those closely. And then the 2022 election cycle, lots of stories about that, both local and regional, state superintendent, and so on. As far as live stream of our board meetings, our regular board meeting in October had 117 views, and that's the... We didn't have a work session, so that's the last meeting that I tracked. Social media, we're still on par. We have just under 11,000 followers on Facebook, so that's a good avenue for us to communicate information. And then our website, 112,000 users in the last 28 days. 66,000 of those are our own learners at the academics page. 314,000 sessions. So our top page hits include that academics page. That accounts for about 300,000 hits. Our homepage reached just about 30,000 hits. Calendar, about 6,000. Daily menus, about 4,000. And notification, which was a story about some vandalism. That was a link to that story. That got about 3,000 hits, so that tells me that that communication was successful in reaching its destination. Some of our recent communications include that video. I've included, if you haven't had a chance to see it yet, it's included in a link here. And our Veterans Day video, our schools just had phenomenal Veterans Day assemblies. If you had a chance to attend any of them, we tried to hit as many as we possibly could and do a video with the highlights of that. So that video is about three minutes long. It's really worth... Kami did a phenomenal job on that video, just showing our patriotism and our excitement for celebrating that day with our veterans. And then we just sent out a communication of how parents can access last spring ISAT science scores for grades 5, 8, and 11. And then we just did a soft launch on Monday of our new athletics module, which is in addition to our website. We've been working on that all summer. It's finally ready for a soft launch. It still has some work to do, but we're working with our school webmasters as well as their activities clerks to get those pages up and running for winter sports. So that's really exciting. Thessaloniki Trees begins tomorrow with the gala, and then Saturday is an educator appreciation reception. So I'll send you all information about if you show your badge. You can get in free, and then I think you pay for a guest, but I'll send you the details so you have those. Education Foundation will be a recipient, beneficiary of the proceeds raised through the festival. I should College of Business is leading that event this year, and so we're really excited about that. As a sponsor, we have a table at the gala, and then we also will get to select a tree tomorrow, and we will be donating that tree to Bannock House. And so we've invited a representative from Bannock House, as well as one of their students who is an online learner, will be joining. So I really wanted to make sure that they got exactly the tree that they wanted, and so they'll be joining us to help select that. So that is my report.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Following self-explanatory reports are included for the board and the public's information. The board committee meeting, committee meeting minutes, Idaho General Fund Revenue Report, Food Service and Free and Reduced Meal Eligibility Report, the Student Enrollment Report, and the Student Suspension Report. We'll now move on to curriculum and instruction, school safety, and athletics, and we'll start with Amy Bowie, who will report on the following. The revised procedure in handbook adoption.
Good evening. It's good to see all of you. So we... I think it's probably important to start with the fact that the reason we are revising our procedure is that the state... I mean, not the state. Yeah, the legislature passed a statute that we need to comply with. And I'll just refer to it briefly. Such a committee shall... It's talking about a district curricular committee, adoption committee. And it says, "Such a committee shall contain a membership at least one half, of which is persons who are not public educators or school trustees, and shall include parents of a child or children attending a school or schools within the school district. All meetings of the committee shall be open to the public, and any member of the public may attend such a meeting and file written or make oral objections to the curricular materials under consideration." So we needed to revise our procedure for textbook adoption. You can see that we have... How we have structured it in the past is we had an elementary committee, a middle school committee, and a high school committee, and under each one of those headings, we discussed who would be a part of that committee. So in order to comply with statute, and I want you to understand that a lot of discussion and collaboration has gone into this. The curriculum department, Kathy Laris and I, went to cabinet. We went to elementary and secondary principals. We went to district curriculum committee. We wanted to make sure we had a plan. Because textbook adoption is really important. Our instructional materials are really important, and we wanted to make sure we had a smooth and efficient plan. This is... This is what we came up with. We decided to structure the process into two committees. One is an advisory team, okay? And then let's look at that team. The textbook adoption team, they'll have...
Can I interrupt?
Yes, you bet. You must...
I'm juggling these two documents. Which one should I be looking, which is the most current?
Oh.
The addenda.
The addenda, yes.
Okay. Bouncing back and forth.
We've done a lot of revisions, so that's a good question. It's a really good clarification.
Not the one.
Okay, so...
I'm not seeing the difference, but yeah, okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
So, the advisory team will consist of representation from each school with comparable grade level representations. Teachers will be recommended by their principal and appointed by the Director of Curriculum and Cooperation with the Director of Elementary and Secondary Education. One or two principals recommended by the director or secondary, or elementary directors will be appointed by the Director of Curriculum. Also, at least one board member will be on that advisory team, and instructional coaches if applicable. So that will be the advisory team, okay? And then the Materials Adoption Curriculum Committee, that's the committee that complies with the statute. I want you to understand that. So that is the, the adoption committee will include a membership of at least one half, this comes straight out of statute. The adoption committee will include a membership, at least one half of which is persons who are not public educators or school trustees, and shall include parents of a child or children attending schools within the district as required by code. The committee members will be appointed by the curriculum director in coordination with the directors of elementary and secondary education. Parents with students attending schools in the district will be given first priority as appointees on the committee. The district curriculum committee thought that was really important. The committee will not exceed ten members, they want it to be functional and not too large. At least one parent of a child attending a school within the district, because that's code, but as you see earlier, the priority will be given to parents of students within our district. So, how will this work? We will have an advisory team of teachers and administrators and instructional coaches who really dig into the meat of the curriculum. They're reading it, they're discussing it, they're looking at data, they're talking about, they're comparing it to previous curriculum materials that we've had in the past, they're using a rubric to assess it, and then they will come up with a recommendation for, or maybe more than one recommendation, for the advisory, I mean, for the committee, for the materials committee. And then I want to show you this, towards the end of the procedure. The textbook advisory team evaluates materials and makes recommendations to the Materials Adoption Curriculum Committee. The Materials Adoption Curriculum Committee will evaluate the recommendation by the advisory team and advises the board on selection of curriculum materials. Now, that Materials Adoption Curriculum Committee will also have access to all the materials, they'll have meetings, they'll have time with the publisher, they'll, but this is an important distinction, anytime that committee meets, it's an open, it's an open meeting. So we wanted both to occur, so that's why we structured it that way. We wanted our teachers to be able to dig into curriculum and not an open meeting, just dig into curriculum, and then advise the committee, who then would advise you. That's what that looks like.
So I've got a question.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Open for questions.
Sure.
So, the curriculum committee, or excuse me, the Materials Adoption Curriculum Committee, how does a parent get on that? It's like you have to be appointed, so you have to know you or know one of the principals or the directors. Doesn't that seem a little exclusionary?
Well, it's a really good question, and we've tossed, and it's a question that's come up, that we've talked about in cabinet with the principals, and again, I talked with the Director of Secondary Education today about that same thing. We, if there are a lot of parents who want to be on the committee, at that point, we will, we haven't had that, we haven't had that in the past, right? We've done it by invitation, we know which parents have been typically involved, we've invited them, we've appointed them through discussion with the directors, which is what it says, with the directors, but it, we could, we could have several parents who want to participate, and at that point, we would have to, you know, we even talked today, like, maybe we have to do some sort of a lottery or some sort of, like, that becomes, that's something we deal with when we come to it, but typically, we've just been able to appoint them, if that answers your question.
So you've not had to turn someone away? I mean, I guess that's the thing, is, are you doing it as an open call first?
We weren't going to, we've always done it by invitation, in fact, we've had the, it's been kind of the opposite, like, the time commitment to come in and look at all the materials, and like, we've asked for, you know, recommendations from building principals, or like, who, do you have a parent who would be interested in this? And then we extend an invitation, and then we extend an invitation, they accept, and we appoint. That's how it's worked in the past, and maybe we're being idealistic to think that that will continue to work that way.
That's the thing, and I don't know if the other board members feel the same, but I feel like there are parents out there that might be interested, but if you don't give them the opportunity, how would they know that this was an opportunity?
So your suggestion would be to put it out there, see who, see who's interested, and then...
And throw it on the wall, and if it doesn't stick and nobody comes, then you at least have said you've made it as, you've made it an option available.
Right.
Because we all know that there's a lot of the loud people out there that have opinions about this.
Right, absolutely.
And not that you, you don't want to appear as if you're being, let's only get the parents that we know will like what we want to do, kind of a thing.
Right.
Am I, am I in the point on that?
No, I think it should be an open call for sure, and then, I mean, obviously, everybody can't be on the committee.
No, of course not, but I mean, there needs to be some sort of...
But there can be more, if we want there to be more, we can base it on interest.
Yeah, well, the procedure, we said, I want to point this out, and we absolutely could change it, but it was really important to all of the committees that we've already taken this to, that if that committee becomes twenty or thirty, or like, how big, then it doesn't become functional, so it has to be...
Between the five and the twenty, like...
Well, if it's five, this is, well, the limit is ten, and this is really important that we understand this, the limit is ten, which means five parents and then five educators and trustees, because it's half, that committee, now per statute is half. That's why we set it at ten, so that we could have five parents or patrons.
I think, like I said, I think the perception would be, I mean, as a parent now, first time hearing this, I mean, kind of getting my, if I didn't know about it, but yet I was very interested in having a say or having, you know, some involvement in that.
I think, I think that's a really interesting thought, and we've talked about it, and I wonder, I wonder if we put it out, A, how many we would get, and then B, how we would, how would, let's say we got twelve, and we had, is there an application process? Do we, at some point, I think we've got to keep this in mind, at some point, we still have to appoint them.
Sure.
Right?
There still have to be, still have to be some whittling down, but I, but again, it's kind of that perception of, are you picking versus allowing kind of an open forum first, and letting, and you're right, there may, those that you pick might be the ones that would come forward anyway, but I think there needs to be...
Some sort of an open.
Some sort of an open call first, yeah.
Yeah, the Teacher Advisory Committee Highland is, I really like the way that Brad has done that. He's, it's an open invitation, and there's only like, three or four, I can't remember how many parents that are on the committee.
Right.
It's not an open forum, it's just an open invitation.
And then at that point, some sort of selection process has to occur.
And I don't know what their selection process is, but we could determine what the selection process could be.
The other thing I noticed is that there's no, and again, maybe I'm making this way too complicated, but as far as representatives from all three schools, is that a balanced?
Oh, yes, oh, yeah.
Or from...
Oh, yes.
That is, okay.
Yeah, on, and then let's look at this, let's go back, well, it's a lot. Let's go back to the advisory team, that's a good question. So the advisory team, the very first, there's representation from each school with comparable grade level representation.
And I just see the elementary, so that's the one you're talking about, the elementary advisory list?
Well, there is, we no longer divide it by elementary, middle school, and high school. Now, no matter whether we're doing an elementary adoption or we're doing a high school adoption, we're still going to do it, and it'll be an advisory team that has equal representation from all of the schools. So this year, we're talking about an elementary adoption, so there'll be two, two teachers from each, either K-two, one from K-two and one from three-five from each school, so there'll be, there will be two teachers from each school, and appointed administrator.
Now, this now looks like a big group, then.
It is bigger.
It's bigger than ten.
In the elementary, it's bigger, because there's thirteen middle schools, so there's twenty-six, and that, that type of work, like I said, that's different, that work looks different.
Okay.
That's when they're looking at data, and there are teachers who have taught the curriculum before, they know, they know the nuances, they know what the strengths and weaknesses have been of our previous curriculum, and we really want to rely on their expertise and their experience in formulating recommendations for the Materials Adoption Curriculum Committee. And again, that, that committee has to be five, has to be half parents, and has to be open law, open meeting.
And so when you say the two representatives from all the elementaries, that isn't the, that's the advisory.
That's the advisory team.
So, now, as far as the advisory team, do they go through the process of trying the curriculums, the whole process of, what do you call it, piloting them? Do they go through, before it ever comes to the advisory committee?
That's a good question. Let me tell you about the timeline. They have time, they have time.
A really important timing issue.
They have time with, so from November, assuming you are okay with the procedure tonight, late November, we start this process of introducing the team, and by March, that's when we want to present, that's when we want to present a recommendation from the advisory team to the Materials Committee in March. So that gives them December, January, February, and March on a big adoption like this, to have, to discuss the materials, preview the materials, take them back to their buildings, work with their other teachers in the buildings, talk about them.
So, so it is before they're piloted?
I wouldn't call it a full pilot, I'm hesitant to use the word pilot, I don't know if that's, we're not like piloting the program for a year, but they're exploring the materials for a good three or four months.
And I'm sorry, I think I'm, I'm sorry, I didn't follow...
That's okay.
Follow, so, so, the advisory committee selects the ones that they are going to explore, and then after they've explored for...
No.
Oh, okay, okay.
No, we, Ms. Laris and I, and the curriculum department with direction alongside of the Director of Elementary and Director of Secondary, we select the, and the state, the state's vetted resources, so we come up with three or four of the most, of the, the resources that would most fit what we're looking for in our district. We present those to the advisory team, the, and then we give them rubrics, like, in fact, I just looked at the rubrics for the K-five today, and they're really specific rubrics on what we're looking for, and it's a scoring system, and the teachers work, they look at data, they look at strengths and weaknesses, they go back to their schools, they discuss in their schools, and then they make a recommendation or recommendations to the Materials Committee, who then makes a recommendation to you.
The Materials Committee is that ten?
Yeah.
Okay.
Does that make sense? And they make a recommendation to you?
After they go through the...
And they've looked, they've had access to the materials for that entire time, also, they just...
And all the board members would also have access to that material.
Yes, yes.
Right?
Yes.
Between, between the, during the process of, so before it's distributed in any way, the Curriculum Committee would see it and have that time to review it? I'm sorry.
I just, I just don't think I know what you mean by distributed in any way.
To teachers and schools to actually...
Use, yeah, they'll just be discussed, they'll be...
Not adopt.
They will, it will be distributed to them to look at before it's been approved. They'll be looking at it. The same time that the, that you're looking at it as a member of the Materials Curriculum Committee, you'll all be looking at the materials at the same time.
Okay.
Does that make sense? And then they'll present it to you.
Yeah, I think so. I think so.
Yeah.
Thanks, Amy.
You're welcome.
You're not involving the parents.
We'll definitely, so, this is just me being new, so they've given feedback on the process, is that something I need to include in the procedure? Is that something we just do in practice? Do you see what I'm saying?
I think, given the direction from the board, maybe we just need to refine that process as far as how we get the parent...
And that's not really in procedure, though, right? So, so we can move forward with procedure.
Yeah, procedure, we don't ask the board to approve that.
Yeah.
Can I just give us direction?
So I can take that direction.
The board, right, is that we want to expand the opportunity for, or solicit some volunteers who would like to come forward before we send out direct invitations, perhaps.
Right, which we've thought about, so it makes sense.
Yeah.
It really is something we've been weighing, and I want you to know that's something we've been weighing.
Yeah, or, or...
As recent as like thirty minutes before the board meeting, I was like, all right, again, what are we gonna do?
The other thing that I would, I would add along with that is just, I think I understand it, but the way, but I think, when I said that, I think you, you said yes, that before, before it's narrowed down to the ones that, you know, the final decisions kind of, with the advisory, it is brought to the ten-person team.
Oh, yeah.
Absolutely.
They're the ones who make the final recommendation to you. Advisory team, Materials Committee of the ten, and then you.
So, just like, as an example, how many curriculums would be estimating? How many curriculums would be brought to the ten-person, not the advisory?
Yeah, I think it, I think that's, I'm going to answer that with it depends, it depends on what the advisory team, if they may, they may find one that's like leaps and bounds and say, we really, after thoughtful and thorough investigation, we really think that this one is the best, or they may say, we have these two, and here's the strengths and weaknesses of both, so, and it just depends.
So the process is...
It's still going to be a recommendation, so that ten-person committee can review all the materials if they want.
All of it, and they have plenty of opportunity, and then they can go back.
Committee to say, this is our number one pick, this is our two, this is our three here.
The committee makes the final.
It's just hard with the advisory committee if they don't have anything to compare it to, if they're only given one recommendation. That's what I mean, is, how narrow does this get?
Narrow it down to the least.
Okay, I'm just wondering how narrow does it get as far as representing different modes, different thought, different, different types, or, you know, what it...
And the team and the committee have access to all of the materials the whole time, that's what you need to know. The team of teachers and the committee that makes the recommend, the final proposal to you, they have, they have all of the materials.
From the beginning, oh, okay, so it isn't until after?
Yeah.
It's the whole time? That's, because it's a lot to look over, so it, you just need that time.
Yeah.
I think if you open it up to parents, I think they're going to weed themselves out.
Like, when they realize the time commitment, yeah, I agree.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks. Next, A.J. Watson will report on the following. Head Start Program Report and Action Items and the Twenty-First Century After-School Program Update.
Good evening, board members. Head Start Update, enrollment, they're currently at one hundred and sixteen learners, they have six classrooms, they do have a number of children still on the waitlist. In regards to personnel, they have not been able to make any new hires at this point, and still have a number of open positions. As you can tell, they are not at full enrollment still, and that's due to not being able to hire enough staff members to fully enroll, all those that they, they could, they're still working to try and fill those positions. In regards to just basic updates, they've completed all of the required forty-five-day screenings for all of their classrooms, and they seated a new policy council just this month on November tenth. There are three action items on the agenda for approval today. The first one is a recommendation to approve the Head Start Self-Assessment Plan for the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three school year. Action item number two is a recommendation to approve a budget revision, a carryover, and a non-federal share waiver request for unobligated equipment, minivan and a bus, this is from the fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two budget. And then recommendation number three is to approve a carryover and a non-federal share waiver request for COVID-nineteen cares funding from the twenty-one, twenty-two budget for new outdoor learning equipment. So those will be the items up for action today. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Sue Pettit will report on the following, the graduation twenty-three, twenty-twenty-three graduation ceremony plans, the draft policy procedure, and procedure for sixty-one oh four extended learning opportunities, out-of-state overnight travel requests, and early graduation requests.
Okay, so a couple of you know about our graduation stuff already, but I'll inform you. We were called a week and a half, no, about two weeks ago, from ISU, and Holt Arena will be in full construction mode during graduation, so we will... So we will be unable to have any high school graduations in Holt Arena this year. Met with our.
Drive by.
Right. So I met with our principals and we had a long discussion about where to hold graduation ceremonies. And it was agreed upon that we would really like to hold it at the Wellness Complex and hope for great weather. And we actually took that to the county commission last week and they approved our use of that for all four graduations. And so pending the weather, we will be at the Wellness Complex. If weather is not good, the plan is to go into the high school gymnasiums and limit the number of people.
And then just stream it. And then just stream it.
Yeah. So, I'm sure.
We're just gonna start now and it's gonna be great weather.
But that's, that's the plan for a high school graduation and we'll be making that announcement for the newspaper and for the media, so.
Are you envisioning opening the lawns?
The lawn and, yep.
So.
Yep, full capacity.
Yep, full capacity.
That'll be fun.
So, yeah. We're also going to be spreading out graduations, so instead of eleven, making it right. Twelve, three and six, it's going to be ten, two and six. So they'll have a couple extra hours in between for parking and then.
Makes our day really long.
I know it does.
We're getting a little time now, Sue.
I'm sorry?
We're getting overtime on this.
You can get nap time in there. I'm putting the televisions up and we're a little nervous.
It's just gonna cost us even more money.
So, yeah, it's just, it just is what it is. So we're gonna be talking with our SROs and seeing about some traffic patterns and seeing if we can get some of that set up, so.
And would you do something like what we did with the teachers, you know, have buses come or?
We'll see.
I guess I'm jumping ahead.
What we can and can't do, so we're just gonna have to wait and see.
Definitely don't mean to be jumping ahead.
We didn't, we didn't even, we couldn't even announce it until after last Friday and so, that's, anyway, that's where we're at.
It's out now.
It's out now, okay. Draft policy and procedures for sixty-one oh-four, this is a new policy. And it has to do with state statute. They came, the legislature came last year and said, students should be able to earn credit for extended learning opportunities, so outside of school. And the state board of education, the Amy White's firm, and then the ISBA have been working on a draft policy. And this is their policy they've come up with, with a couple of tweaks that they said, please add in your own spaces. So essentially, kids can earn credits for outside opportunities, learning opportunities, as long as it does not cost a fee. And that has to do with our state constitution, you can't charge a fee for a high school credit. And so that's part of that policy. We have a procedure, they would all be right now elective credits. And a student could earn up to six of those elective credits in their high school career. So I'm gonna let you go ahead and read if you have any questions on it. This is for first reading and we'll put it out for public comment and then we'll go from there. Okay? Out of state and overnight requests, we have a few. One that I know Renee talked to you about from Pocatello High School for their government class and they went on Monday. And so it's Monday, yesterday and today, so I've talked to them about making sure that they're timely on getting their requests in prior to board meetings and not late. And so they're, they're ready to do that. The other two are for spring break, excuse me, one's a spring break concert or tour and one is choir tour down to Salt Lake at Christmas time for some performances down there. And then early graduation, end of try one, we have a few kids that are looking forward to graduating. Most of them are gonna be attending college and or working to save to attend a college. And they've all completed their graduation requirements and so that's information for you guys. And then, I don't know if I'm doing camp or if, yeah, Tanya's doing camp. Did you have any? Any, okay, thanks.
Thank you. Tanya Wilks will report on the following camp requests, winter athletic, athletic schedules.
Here we go, basketball and wrestling. You guys ready?
Yeah.
We have a couple camps that they're trying to do, Thanksgiving basketball camp and then a clinics for volleyball that'll start. And that is up for action. And then our winter schedules. Any questions? You got girls' basketball, boys' basketball and wrestling.
It's a lot.
It's a lot. Gyms will be in full use, full swing. There are some tournaments that they're requesting to go to, so I just want you to make, be aware of that. I think Sentry goes to a Vegas tournament. I know that Sentry students didn't mention that the volleyball program got the sportsmanship award at state tournament as well, so that was pretty cool.
Oh, that's really good.
Any questions? I expect to see most of you at all the games next week.
Thank you. Next topic on agenda is business operations, which will be presented by Jonathan Balls. He'll present the following, K twelve enrollment capacity comparison report, driver's education, permission to bid process and VIBA trust fee appointment.
Okay, thank you very much. The first is just by way of information. Every year we, we look at our enrollment and versus capacity as of November. And so you'll see three different columns there. There's a lot of data on here. So, and this is just one data point that we kind of look like to, to see kind of the capacity of our buildings. Maybe some high level things that you could notice, again, as it breaks out elementary, middle school and high school. You see a lot of our growth was in the secondary, particularly the high school arena there. I will mention one thing, and that the, the building capacity for Pocatello is, was increased this year. And, but it, it was the old one last year, you know, because that new addition wasn't operational yet. And so, so that's, that's, that's just one, one thing in there. So again, just as, you know, as you look at this, if you have any questions or concerns, again, Sue and A.J. and Sue and Hal, you know, we, we all kind of look at this to see, you know, what are the needs? Again, there's a lot of reasons why these, these buildings fluctuate. But again, there's also bubbles inside, grade bubbles inside there that, you know, it might be a pretty packed, packed grade level. But other grade levels are not, so the average might seem a little bit less, even though some classes might be, might be a little bit bigger there. And it's all based on, again, twenty-eight students for elementary and middle school and twenty-five for high school on the bottom. Okay. The next one is our driver's ed program. Again, by way of history, we've, we've offered a driver's ed program for, for several, several years. And it was probably in the, well, it was in two or three, four, five years before COVID. You know, where the privatization of the driver's ed program, you know, where there were, the school district was competing against business owners that offered a little bit more flexibility. And so even before our kind of hiatus with, with COVID, it was, our numbers were decreasing quite a bit. And so, but with COVID and even the year after, we decided not to do a driver's ed program. We did, I, I stood here and asked that we kind of revive that to kind of help for some of these, have an option for some of these drive, bus drivers that are impacted with all-day kindergarten. And I appreciate being able to do that. And that has helped a, a small amount. I thought it would help more, just because there's a better option that our bus drivers have taken advantage of to be able to keep their benefits. And so I, I, I'm here before you just because of the lack of drivers, you know, that we currently, cause again, these are college courses that have to be taken to be certified. And so, and just the lack of participation by our learners. I'd like to actually ask your, your, for your approval this evening to actually suspend indefinitely the driver's ed program for our school district.
Okay.
Moving along. The next is permission to, to bid. Again, as we, we own the property at two forty-one North Garfield, that building needs to be demolished. And a, a parking lot put on, put on that. As well as, since you have approved the purchase and sale agreement, upon successful closing of that building, we'd like to be able to quickly go out to, for an RFQ, which is a request for qualifications for an architectural services to kind of help us to maximize the space and optimize the configuration for that building. Yes, did I reverse?
Two together there?
Okay, possibly, because I didn't.
Yeah, so we were talking about the demolition of one building, right?
Correct.
Downhill property?
Yep, yeah, I wanna make sure, yeah, I don't wanna demo our new building. Sure, sure. So let me, let me clarify here, let me use my hands here, yeah, just to make sure. So again, it's the downward building obviously that we're gonna demo and put in a parking lot. And so we'll want to, to have a bid to be able to do that. But then obviously, on our new purchase of our, the all-state building at forty-two hundred Hawthorne, we want to be able to, to go out and secure an architect to help us configure that. So I'm asking for those two, permission of those two things.
If the administration was over there, cause if we pay for the, if we pay for the architect to do all the plans without.
Sure, and, and, and so, so I think, well, for my, for my stance, I'd like to secure the architect and then we'll basically have a scope meeting and that, that we could involve the board in that, in a work session. For example, okay, now we have the building, we have secured our, the best architect, what do we wanna see in there? What options do we want? I mean, they could even draw it, you know, for CTE, potentially some admin offices if, if the board, you know, provides guidance in that direction. Is that a?
That's great. That, that's great, just cause I haven't had a chance to talk to Rhonda, I wanted her to.
Oh, absolutely.
Educate me a little bit more.
As we move forward, we would need the services of an architect. But this provides an opportunity for the board to review qualifications and to make a selection based upon, well, the qualifications, whatever they've done in the past with business or education, corporate, whatever. And so I anticipate we would get local as well as state interest. And so then, once we select an architect, then we could tell them what we want to see. And that would be a committee made up of the board, Mrs. Pettit, Mrs. Vance, myself, Balls, yeah.
Maybe the new CTE committee?
Okay, so, well, I think Rhonda will do well to represent her group.
Yeah. I'm just, I'm sorry, that was.
I guess the other question I had is, didn't we understand that half of that building has classroom capacity presently that possibly could be used by third try or are we just not?
So that's part of what we will need to work out in the selection of an architect. And as we contract services, you know, we have some building on site, which we will, staging areas, et cetera. How do we keep our learners safe? And so that would all be part of this process, whether or not we could occupy a certain portion of that with an entry and an exit, you know, perhaps on at least two levels.
And that's so nice that there's a keyed entrance on the side.
Yeah, yeah.
So if the learners all needed to come in through the side.
And if we were to do it in phases, perhaps we're doing, you know, the north side is, the south side's occupied. Maybe we pick up the other one. But then, you know, on that west side, there's the culinary space, that's going to take a little more reconfiguration than the way it is now. And there's a doorway entry-exit right there. So I think we might have to pick it up in phases, but an architect and a construction manager, that may be Mr. Balls, could help us through that process as, you know, as far as the sequence of it all.
Good.
Thank you.
Yeah, yeah, it could be possible, but again, I think safety is a concern as well as just the timing of it all.
Right.
Yeah, not picking the architect is, it's not easy.
Yeah, right, right. And Mr. Balls.
Yes, we have that experience in that.
Yeah, and Mr. Balls could tour them through it and just give them an idea of what we are, what we're thinking. And then they would have some idea of whether or not they're interested in bidding on the project and helping us see our vision, come to permission.
Very good.
Yeah.
Don't wanna rush it, I know, but it's hard.
Well, and, and we definitely want to, I mean, this is a great asset for our, our school district and community. It's just we need to be strategic, methodical, you know, just so we do it correctly, you know, for again, decades, century, even, you know, down the road. So anyway, so that is on your action item to ask, or to grant permission to bid these two projects. And lastly, we have, and I've got some clarifying statements here, we, we say it, it's VIBA, the voluntary employee benefit account. This is basically a health, healthcare account for classified staff funded completely by the, our employer. Again, we have a, a committee comprising myself, our accountant, Mr. Cade Teeter, our insurance administrator of assistant, Ms. Shawna Miller. And then we have representative from the PEA and a representative from the classified staff that serve in, in two-year increments. With Mr. Tom Wilson's retirement, we need to replace him and we're asking that Mr. Brian Glenn be appointed by the board as the new classified representative. And of course, as always, if we ever use this money, then we will bring it to the board and, and ask for that to happen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is employee services and we'll have Mr. Smart present. Infinite campus.
Few little odds and ends, excuse me. We always talk about infinite campus, IC and any technology issues that we would like you to be aware of. Of course, IC is an ongoing project and this month is our second submission for the year. And it's New Friday and we're sitting on a handful of errors that we need to clean up. So tomorrow, I think we'll have that on its way and make the State Department of Ed happy campers. Infinite campus, as I, I don't know if you're aware of this or not, I think we discussed this last month. We are moving away from a, a, a local server solution to a cloud solution. And they've been prepping the data and the network and everything to make that work. They are going to, to be migrating that, that database over to the cloud during, during the Thanksgiving break, so next week. And once it's migrated, it becomes a different look and feel. And so our, our technology and curriculum folks have been working through kind of letting the users know what the new look might look like and how to navigate it. So that'll be something they'll have to do once they get back after, after the Thanksgiving break. So once they get back, they will have to be up and running on that new system and be able to at least take grades and attendance and all that sort of thing. So that's coming up and they're very confident there'll be, there'll be no glitches in that, so. I was talking to them this afternoon, yeah, we're ready, so, we're ready. Probably the only other thing I could maybe share with you is we were, they're researching security camera solutions. And trying to tie in maybe other security features like keys, fobs, entrance, whatever they can get into that solution. So they are researching that and we will keep you informed on how that might transpire over the next several months. Because that is part of, I think, part of our ESR budget plan, so they are researching that. And they believe they have a, a very viable solution, which they're, which we will probably share with the safety committee first and will probably share it with the board for eventual approval. So that is coming down the pike.
Okay.
And that'll conclude my report tonight.
Thank you. Thank you. Next on the agenda is Human Resources. Annual Employee Policy Review, Prevention Specialists.
Good evening, it's nice to see all of you. I like when my name shows up on there and I get to present a little bit to you. So this evening, I just wanted to present, we always talk about the policy review and what that looks like.
Settle down now.
Yeah, I'm so rowdy, sorry about that. Gosh, it doesn't want to stay in here. Carl, what'd you do before you left?
That's booby-trapped, clearly.
I got it, it's fixed, it's fixed, it's fixed, okay. I'm just not going to touch it. So, policy review goes out in July to all of our staff members, and then it's always due on October thirty-first. And I usually do one of those things that Para does and say, okay, I mean it, it's due on October thirty-first, and then, okay, I'm going to give you one more week. It's going to be due November seventh, or those things. So this year, it was nice through negotiated agreement and that they had an opportunity on one of their, we have the one day that's kind of like the phantom day. And so there's been different uses for those hours. And so four of those hours was negotiated that they would be able to use for policy review. And classified staff, as far as those opening days and some of those opportunities. We do some things with our food service and our maintenance department, where they do those as a group effort. And so we've had those, all of those paperwork turned in, and I'm happy to report that it's over, no, I'm happy to report that there was very few that didn't complete. And so I think, to be honest with you, I think in the certified world, we maybe had one as far as non-compliance with having it done by October thirty-first. So I think that was a good use of those four hours and.
Attention.
Right? And so then, just some of the other things that we talked about a little bit, we're just making sure that if they knew that they have the thirty days to still be able to complete that. And then some of the other areas that are concerned is sometimes as coaches are kind of difficult because they're not always in the building, and so making sure that they have those completed. And so if there's anyone who didn't complete it prior to the thirty-first, before practices or those things start in the fall, if they're a fall sport, they will complete that in July when it goes out. Any questions on that? And then the last one is a memo in your packet that is tucked to you in regard to when Dr. Howell had sent out a memo in October about additional support. So this is for the prevention specialists at Pocatello High School for a full-time and a part-time at Century High School for the remainder of this school year and next school year through ESRA funding. And then looking at the position at New Horizons and changing that from a teacher contract to an administrative contract under an elementary assistant principal pay scale. And I think that that is in your packet. So just our requests is for you to have action on that. Any questions?
No.
Okay, great, thank you.
Oh, Mr. Howell.
Okay, good, I'm back. I was going to say, good evening, but you've already corrected me half dozen times already. So first up is board calendar for you. And you can see district curriculum this morning and board meeting tonight. Tomorrow, we have a placeholder for student hearings, but we fortunately do not have it. And so we'll be off the hook for tomorrow. Then you can see all next week, we are in break. And then we'll have you back for November thirtieth, another placeholder for student discipline hearings. And not sure how that's looking, but we'll keep you posted. And then you can see on the, well, there's a big jump there. From November to December, I spoke with Ms. Johnson this morning, and we're going to get some school visits in that will meet your schedules as far as personally and professionally. And so typically, that's the first week of December. December's going to go quick with just a couple of weeks there. And so we'll be meeting again as a board, basically, two weeks when we return from break. And so we'll have you back on the thirteenth along with that.
I also have a conversation on the board work session with legislators.
The legislators, yeah.
With legislators, and that will be my next item of my thing. And so we were looking at Monday, the.
Or Tuesday, December sixth.
Okay, we're going to go with Tuesday, December sixth. And do we have a proposed time yet?
Four.
Four o'clock, okay? And there is a proposed agenda. I've got some little things I'm going to touch up to that, but that gives us an outline of work, I'll catch that in just a minute. And then you can see winter break for the balance of December. And then that brings us clear into January and a new year. All right, next up is that draft agenda for our meeting with our legislators. You can see some successes there, I want to add career ladder to that. The leadership premiums, as you may recall, were discontinued by the state, but the board approved those. We were able to just complete a list with assistance of our directors and cabinet. And so, you know, we will just report on that. I don't foresee them changing that up with the state just because of the state contribution to the insurance package. And so we took full advantage of that. We can add insurance into that success because we know that two hundred and three of our families took advantage of that coverage once it was more affordable. And so I think that's important to put that on there, too. Some needs and concerns, top of the list, really, from our ISBA conference, one of those things I would put on there is the vouchers. We heard a lot of debate about that, only one sided, so I don't know if you call it a debate, but there was a lot of information shared. And so we want to express our concerns about that with our legislative delegation, because we are meeting, we probably need to talk a little bit about, with regard to our supplemental levy, that because of the career ladder and some other state funding, that they would maintain the enrollment base as far, you know, as opposed to the attendance, that's been helpful, too. And so we were able to pass those statements on to our local group here. And so all of our property owners. And then super majority on bond elections. Right hand in hand with that, I think, is Resolution Five on the twenty-year option for a school plan facilities levy. That would be helpful, so maybe we could encourage that. As well as all of those resolutions being presented toward the end or taking questions, the board is sharing their thoughts about the resolutions and the different discussions that we heard at conference.
Okay, do we do this in a work session to talk about this draft, then?
So if you have some other ideas, I'm going to touch this up just a little bit, and then I'll send it to the board. And then if you have some feedback or things that I may have missed, if you'll just get that to Ms. Johnson, then we'll incorporate that into.
Okay, yeah. Because, yeah, I would, there would be a couple of things maybe to add.
Yeah, me too. And, you know, time was a little short for us to put this together because we were all uptown last week at a conference. And so this was kind of a rough draft.
And can I ask you one question on it really quick?
Absolutely.
Timing of school board elections, you want to reverse that back to the way it was? Is that what, what is that?
I would just like for you to maybe, when that comes up in discussion, talk about your experience. And if, you know, just.
Is there a proposal to change?
No, no, not at all.
Oh, okay, I just wondered.
They need to be aware of, yeah, the challenges that you may have experienced. Not that it's, you know, impossible to do, but it just took a little more effort on your part, really. And so I think that that's important, that they know that you were up this challenge.
As opposed to, as opposed, okay, okay.
Yeah, so as opposed to, you know, like a May election and then an appointment in July. So we've left that on there just because I think it would just be important for you to share that.
Right.
Yeah, and again, not proposing that we do anything differently, but just.
When will they know their committees? Because, I mean, many of our legislators are not on the education committee. When do they get their signups?
I don't think any of ours were.
Not until January.
Was it January? They, that, when that happens?
I would think.
Could we ask them to try to get on the committee? Can you make this a priority?
Pressure space on Senator Househead or Jay Fair.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm sure they all have their interests and their expertise. Yeah, so they probably have ideas about where they would like to serve as well, but certainly a little vote of encouragement with their.
Okay.
And finally, the board calendar for you. This is always set in January because, again, it just time, it's timed with the election and the seating of new board members. So it seems a little odd that, you know, the schedule that doesn't necessarily, you know, match up to a school schedule. But nonetheless, it is January through the end of December. And we kept everything pretty much the same as far as routine for school visits, work sessions, regular meetings, every other Wednesday for student hearings. Work session still at three-thirty, school visits, subject to change based upon your availability, of course. And I think that's about it. Mr. Watson is meeting with calendar committee.
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow. And so, you know, these dates as far as vacation and so forth, the breaks, will tie in to the calendar committee's recommendation that will be presented to the board. So Ms. Johnson's just putting it on there in anticipation of those dates, but subject to change, as all of them, like this past month when we had to remove a work session because we were attending ISBA conference. So that, there's your calendar for next year.
Okay, thank you.
That's it for me.
All right. Next on the agenda is public written comment pertinent to agenda items or action items, and there are no written comments, so we'll just move on. And now we'll move to action items. And the first item of business is to approve the Head Start Self-Assessment Plan for twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three. Is there a motion?
I move that we approve the Head Start Self-Assessment Plan for twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three as presented.
Any discussion? Oh, is it second? We have a second? Do I get a second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? No, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye, okay, motion's passed. Next item is the Head Start Budget Revision Carryover and Non-Federal Share Waiver Request for Unobligated Equipment from FY twenty-one to FY twenty-two. Is there a motion?
I hereby move that the board approve the Head Start Budget Revision Carryover and Non-Federal Share Waiver Request for Unobligated Equipment from Fiscal Year Twenty-One to Fiscal Year Twenty-Two as presented.
Second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion's passed. Next item is to approve the Head Start Carryover and Non-Federal Share Waiver Request for COVID-nineteen CARES Funding from February, from FY twenty-one to FY twenty.
Move that the board approve the Head Start Carryover and Non-Federal Share Waiver Request for COVID-nineteen CARES Funding from Fiscal Year Twenty-One to Fiscal Year Twenty-Two as presented.
Don't want to rush you.
And I second.
So second?
Yeah, I second.
Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and motion's passed. Next item is to hear first reading Policy Sixty-one oh four, Extended Learning Opportunities, is there a motion?
I hereby move that the board hear on first reading the below-listed policy as presented, Policy Sixty-one oh four, Extended Learning Opportunities.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion's passed. Next item of business, approve out-of-state overnight travel requests. Is there a motion?
Hereby move that the board approve the out-of-state overnight travel requests as presented.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, no opposed, okay, motion's passed. Next item is the approve early graduation request.
I hereby move the board approve the early graduation request as presented.
Second?
I second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion's passed. Next item of business is approve winter athletic schedule inclusive of travel. Is there a motion?
Do we do the camp request?
Oh, I didn't do the camp request, but we could.
We could do, we can, we're fine with that order.
We can go back. We can go back to camp requests, let's do the athletics.
Okay.
I hereby move that the board approve the winter athletic schedule inclusive of travel as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
And any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
It must be getting late because I'm going to skip this one.
I didn't even, I'm like, I'm just going for it.
Let's approve the camp request. Is there a motion?
I hereby move.
Okay.
That the board approve the camp requests.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, and the motion's passed. And now, the next item is to approve the Driver Education Program Proposal. Is there a motion?
I hereby move that the board approve the Driver's Education Program Proposal as presented.
Is there a second?
I second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion's passed. Next item of business is to grant permission to bid downward demolition project and architectural services for forty-two hundred Hawthorne LLC. Is there a motion?
I hereby move that the board grant permission to bid downward demolition and architectural services for forty-two hundred Hawthorne LLC as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Any discussion? All those in favor?
I have a question. I don't know if Jon, is Jonathan still here?
Yeah.
So when it says the forty-two hundred Hawthorne LLC, what is that? Why is it a, is that because of the investment group that owns it currently? And, and, so we'll change, okay, keep going. Discussion finished, thank you.
Thanks for your permission.
Let's vote on it.
Did we vote on that? Come on.
I am probably, no, we had the discussion.
Okay, good. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Did you get a second?
Yeah.
Yes, okay.
The motion's passed, all right. And the next item of business is to appoint Brian Glenn as the new VIBA trustee. Is there a motion?
I hereby move that the board appoint Brian Glenn as the new VIBA trustee as presented.
Second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion's passed. And next item is to approve the Prevention Specialist and Turnaround Officer Proposal, is there a motion?
I hereby move that the board approve the Prevention Specialist and Turnaround Officer Proposal as presented.
Is there a second?
I second.
Any discussion?
I do actually have a question, I'm so sorry.
Okay, you can have.
I'm just wondering, I noticed there was the prevention officers for Century and Pokie. Is there not so much of a need at Highland, or is that a different?
They already have four administrators.
Oh, so this would just add it.
Pocatello and then they have two Century.
Oh, okay, so this is just a new administrator position? Is that right?
Yeah, kind of a quasi-administrative role that could help attend IDP meetings and provide some help with discipline, scheduling, et cetera.
Oh, okay, so that need is already felt? I was just curious if there just wasn't a need there, or?
Oh, yeah, because we already have four administrators, full-time at Highland High School. This allows us to use some ESAR monies to pay the stipends and the backfill on the teaching positions. The general fund will pick up in, you know, perpetuity for however long the assistant principal that's at New Horizons, that will come from general fund.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, motion's passed. Final, the final item of business is to adopt the board meeting calendar for twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four. Is there a motion?
I hereby move that the board adopt the board calendar, meeting calendar for twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four as presented.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Motion's passed, all is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm just assuming. Rash.
Don't ask for discussion.
And now for the final, entertain a motion to adjourn.
I hereby move that we adjourn this meeting.
Is there a second?
I will second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Okay, we've done it. Thank you.